Hello.
I saw how to do that.
Okay, we're about to get started. It'll be your, um, the ask of you, uh, thanks for coming. Um, please, everyone, silence your cell phones. All right, welcome, everyone in attendance, and welcome, everyone at home. Uh, thank you for coming to the Riviera Beach Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Today is December eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. The time is approximately six thirty P M. If anyone wants to speak on the agenda item, please complete a public comment card and give it to the Planning and Zoning Board Staff prior to the board discussion and before the public comment section is announced. In no event will anyone be allowed to submit a comment card to speak on an agenda item after the item, after the title of the item has been read or considered. The total time allotted for each member of the public to comment on each item is three minutes. Please be reminded that the Planning and Zoning Board is committed to civility and decorum by members of the public who attend this meeting. Let's start with a moment of silence.
Yeah.
And the board will lead the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Uh, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, Chair. Chair William Wiley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Frank Fernandez.
Present.
Board Member Renee Burgess, here. Board Member Shandra Stringer, here. Board Member Refer Williams. Alternate Members, Board Member Anthony Brown.
Present.
Alternate Board Member James Gallin.
Here.
Alternate Board Member Marie Davis.
Present.
Alternate Board Member Lucy Joseph.
Present.
Chair. By Mr. Williams not here tonight, the voting member will be, um, Ms. Lucy Joseph, representing District Five.
Okay, thank you. Um, any, guess that answer, um, any acknowledgement of board member absentee notification?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Mr. Refer Williams did send an email correspondent that he will not be in attendance tonight.
Okay, and an announcement of any board member vacant positions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, we have one vacant position, District Two.
All right, we're gonna roll on to item three. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
None from staff, Mr. Chair.
Chair, I motion that we, uh, accept the agenda as provided tonight.
A second. It has been properly moved in second chair. Are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Board Member Joseph?
Yes.
Board Member Stringer?
Yes.
Board Member Burgess?
Yes.
Board Member Fernandez?
Yes.
Board Member Wiley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Chair.
All right, any disclosure by board members?
Yeah.
On to the next agenda, you already did that. All right, on to number five, approval minutes.
Chair, I move, uh, motion that we approve the Planning and Zoning Board Minutes from the October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five, and November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five meetings.
Second.
It has been properly moved in second chair. Are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Board Member Stringer?
Yes.
Board Member Joseph?
Yes.
Board Member Burgess?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fernandez?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Chair.
All right, do we have any unfinished business?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right, on to new business.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, on behalf of forty-one, forty-two Leo Lane LLC in partnership with Centra and Company, applicant S P twenty-five dash zero zero one four, to approve a site plan application to construct a thirty-six unit townhouse style multifamily resident community. The subject site is a plus minus two point five one acre vacant parcel located at forty-one, forty-two Leo Lane, property control number fifty-six, forty-two, forty-two, twenty-five, zero zero dash zero 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 dash eleven seventy, providing for accessibility, conflict survivability, codification, providing for an effective date. The presenter would be Principal Planner Kurt Thompson.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Board Member, Mr. Kurt Thompson, for the record, and I will present this case before all of you. What you have here before you is by the red dot, the project location of the subject site. As you see here, the property is situated along the south side of Leo Lane, east of North Military Trail intersection, and to the west of I ninety-five. Ninety-five here, this is Leo Lane, and the subject property is here in red. Okay? I have a number of slides, but I'll be going through them fairly quickly here. Has, uh, Ms. Weathers has read to you what this application is all about. This is for a site plan approval to construct a thirty-six unit townhouse style multifamily residential community. The subject site is plus minus two point five one acres. It is a vacant parcel. The address is forty-one, forty-two Leo Lane. Uh, the conditions are, it's a vacant property. You see the ID, parcel ID, you see the lot size, the zoning is multifamily dwelling district R M fifteen, and the land, future land use is M F fifteen. What you see here is the, is the, uh, site plan of the subject proposed site. This is the, this is the entrance. It's a two-way entrance here. This is Leo Lane, and this is the subject site. This is, uh, building D with, it's two stories with eight units. This is building A with two stories, eight units. This is building D, two-story with eight units. And this is building C, two-story with eight units. This is building E, and it's two-story with four units. Four, this is eight, sixteen, twenty-four, thirty-two, and these four makes thirty-six. This is the architectural rendering of the subject property, just to give the board members and the, and the, and the good people in the audience some idea of the subject property. Uh, front door, garage, uh, here, it's pretty straightforward in terms of, of, of this request. What you have here is the, uh, rendering of the floor plans. This is either a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom project. Uh, here you have three bedrooms here. Uh, this is the ground, this is the ground floor. This is the great room, the kitchen, and the, uh, living area here, and the, and a one car, and a, what, a space for one car, and in the driveway, a space for another car. So East Town Home Unit will have space, availability for two parking spaces. One in the garage, one in the driveway, tandem parking. Okay? Now, let me move on. This is for the second floor rendering, and what you have here is, to the left, this is the master suite here, and then you have two bedrooms here and here. If you go over the, here, this is the option where it shows you, uh, no, right here. If you go here, it shows you three bedrooms, the master bedroom here, bedroom here, here, and here. So that's four bedrooms here, and you see three bedrooms here. I'll let the applicant explain how that will work, but there is two options, uh, three-bedroom here and four-bedroom here. Uh, and I'll go further, um, which is along with this presentation. What you have here is, again, the architectural rendering of the front of the property, front elevation. These are elevation shots. You saw the previous one where it was in color. This is in black and white for the front elevation. This is the rear elevation, as you see by the designation here at the rear of the subject property. The units basically come, it splits somewhat like here, a unit here, and a unit, and a unit here. This is the architectural rendering for the left side and the right side is designated here. Just again, to give the board some idea of the, uh, architectural. This is the landscaping, uh, proposed land, oops. I jumped a little here. This is the proposed landscaping for the subject, for the subject property. Um, there will be kiosks here and a mail kiosk here. Uh, it's pretty standard. It meets the, the code, which I will show you in the next slide. Here you have what is shown, what is required. The R E Q, uh, stands for what's re, what is required, and this is what's being provided in terms of landscape area. They're gonna have a lot more shade trees, uh, ninety percent of them will be native accent trees, fifteen percent native. Total ma, uh, landscape, native landscape will be seventy percent. As you can see, they require, they're, they're meeting the code, and in some instances, they're exceeding the regulations. Okay? In terms of parking, as I said, the code requires two parking spaces, and they are showing that they have seventy-two. There'll be, uh, one in the, in each garage, plus a driveway for another vehicle, which will come to a total of seventy-two. Plus, they're showing, uh, guest parking. Let me show you where that is. They're showing guest parking here. There are two parking spaces here and here for guest parking. Okay? Can, are we, can you see that, ma'am?
No. Is it how many parking spaces?
Just trust me, there are, there are guest, guest parking there and there for four, four total guest parking spaces. Okay? All right. In terms of staff review, uh, it is reviewed by planning staff and multiple city departments, and accordingly, uh, the project was found to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the code ordinances, i.e. the zoning code, and it is now ready for the board's consideration and action. As you can see, we've indicated that it meets the comp plan, the zoning regulations, uh, levels of service is compatible with this, with the, uh, comp plan, the land use plan, uh, landscaping is compliant, the lighting photometric you see in the, um, in the sta, in the staff, in the staff report. We have in the backup here, in your staff report, a letter from the police department indicating, uh, compliance along with standards that they have indicated in their backup letter. And this, this says, since I'm on that, um, under, under, on page seven of the staff report, condition number nine, states prior to the permit issuance that the applicant shall amend the lighting photometric plan to comply with, uh, the comments included in the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five memo by the Riviera Beach Police Department, which is this document here, which you all have in your backup. Okay? All right. Community comments, staff has not received any comments either in support or opposition of this project. And this hearing was properly noticed and according to local and state law, and particularly, uh, for this, uh, in terms of section thirty-one dash four of the city code. What you have here is the affidavit of sign notification, and what you have here is the affidavit for mail notice, and this is a sample of what the, the signs in, in terms of the posting of the subject property. Okay? Therefore, um, it, staff humbly request that the Riviera Beach Planning and Zoning Board recommend to the Riviera Beach City Council to approve the proposed site plan. Subject to the staff reports, conditions of approval, those conditions of approval are, are stated on your, in your backup, in the staff report on pages, as I said, uh, on pages six and page seven of the staff report. Mister, um, Zach's, I can't, I, oh, I don't wanna mess up Zach's last name.
Cecera.
Cecera. Zach is here from Kotler Hearing. He represents the applicant in terms of, as a planning consultant. He will, uh, go up and make his presentation from the staff, I'm sorry, for the applicant's point of view. I have a one request that I've asked in the past many a times, uh, that I'm questioning that the planning board holder questions now to after, uh, Mr. Cecera has submitted their, their presentation. Hopefully, by the time you've heard his presentation and this, and you've heard staffs that, um, all your questions, I hope, will be resolved or answered, at least to the best that we can. If not, we, we stand ready to, uh, answer any and all questions. Um, let's see, I just wanna make sure that I covered everything. Um, yes, there was, there was one little project detail that I wanna make clear to the board. Uh, the proposed development, as you saw in the overhead, is made up of five two-story multifamily residential buildings, totaling thirty-six units. Each unit will feature, uh, one thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet of living area, and it, it includes two hu, uh, two hundred and fifty square foot private garage. The option, there are options of three or four bedrooms, as I showed you, uh, two and a half bedrooms, and additional driveway parking. The main point here that's staff, or I would like to, as staff, as your staff, to make, uh, clear to you all. The proposed multifamily use shall be appropriate for the site and will be consistent with the area's future land use designation, which is M F fifteen, medium densely multifamily residential, and its current zoning designation of R M fifteen, multifamily dwelling unit. According to section, according to Division Seven, Section thirty-one dash one ninety-seven of the City Riviera Beach Code ordinances, multifamily dwellings are permitted use by right within the R M zoning district. Thus, the project's site plan is subject to review by the Planning and Zoning Board and the Riviera Beach City Council. The maximum liable density under M F fifteen is fifteen dwelling units per acre. The subject property is two and a half, two point five one acres, which would allow this proposed thirty-six unit project. And with that, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, uh, staff will, um, conclude their presentation and allow, uh, Ms. Cecera to present his. Thank you for your listening.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, Kurt. Uh, thank you for your time, board members. Uh, for the record, Zach Cecera with Kotler and Hearing in Jupiter. I am the agent on behalf of the owner and applicant for this site. And in attendance here tonight, we do have the president of our firm, Kotler and Hearing, with us, Mrs. Nicole Plunkett. Um, and in reality, what, what better site than this one for a townhome development like this? And if you take a look at your screen here, the site is entirely surrounded by existing townhomes, existing condos. There's income-restricted multifamily. There's townhomes that are very similar to our design, closer to Military Trail. And then, of course, we do have the church and the retirement home north of us. So this site is in close proximity to similar uses. It's in close proximity to work and play type uses, and it's in close proximity to I ninety-five, with a parcel buffering us from I ninety-five for any, um, any noise as well, too. So if I flip to our site plan, and that was a great presentation by, uh, Mr. Thompson there. Of course, we are proposing thirty-six units. Each building will be two stories, twenty-seven feet in height. We have a mix of three and four bedrooms, but all of these are the same square footage. Every unit is one thousand six hundred and ninety-four square feet, just with two different floor plans. Every set, every unit has a one-car garage with a decorative paper driveway, and we do have decorative paper crosswalks. We have the centrally located mail kiosk that Kurt did touch on. We have sidewalks on each side of our road that will lead up to the new sidewalk that we will construct on Leo Lane. And if you look to the top right-hand corner of your screen, the property line is pushed back slightly. So we are dedicating a piece of the right-of-way to the city, um, as part of this application. And I'll move over to our landscape plan. I do wanna cover this slide quickly. I won't go over anything here, but just know that we are not asking for any waivers, any variances to the code. This is one hundred percent compliant with the R M fifteen zoning district. So moving over to our landscape plan that was designed by Erin Bolan in our office. She's the director of the, of design, partner with our firm. She's designed literally thousands of sites across the county. We have a ten-foot-wide perimeter landscape buffer that is one hundred percent opaque from the surrounding properties. And why is it opaque? We have gumbo limbo trees planted every thirty feet. We have clusters of vera wood trees. Those are the lighter green trees that you can see between the two, uh, primary buildings there. We have silver button woods between the driveways and fronting Leo Lane, and then a cluster of sable palms at the entryway. Kurt did go over the architecture, but the last, um, the last bullet point I have here, which is interesting, because you don't see this on a lot of designs, especially, um, with townhome designs. We've added a Boston hip roof element over the garage. So that's the, that's that roof element that you can, that you can see there. So in summary, um, you know, the, the city is moving in such a, such a great direction, and I think, uh, townhomes on this site, and with such an attractive price point to really, um, you know, bring in young professionals, families. This is a great project for, for the city. It assimilates well, as you saw, with the surrounding area and the location and, and its proximity to other uses. And, uh, of course, you know, we're very excited. We've been working on this for, uh, about over a year now. So, and Kurt, of course, your staff has been fantastic, working with us along the way to guide us through this process. So, uh, very much appreciate your time and happy to answer, myself and Nicole, happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have any comment cards on this?
No, sir, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll start off with the board, and we'll start off on the end here, and we'll start off with Mrs., uh, Sandra Stringer.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I do have, uh, uh, I'll just stick with the first question. What are the, uh, market prices for the townhomes? Are they market-wise affordable workforce housing? What tiers do those costs fall into?
Right, so these aren't workforce housing, um.
I'm sorry, you said they are or they're not?
They are not workforce housing.
Okay.
So there's a little bit of a backstory to this. So ultimately, the builder coming in does want to provide these as rental units, but we are asking you for the flexibility to do for sale. And that's really due to, uh, the fluctuation in the market going forward, once we build these. And that actually happened on a recent project of mine where we built them for rent. The market just, um, you know, really applied to for-sale units. So in the narrative that is in your packet, there's a statement in there that it mentions eighty percent to one hundred and twenty percent A M I. That's average median income, and that's assuming that these are for sale, but it really corresponds with rental. The rental would be similar to a, a mortgage price, but, uh, so the A M I in Palm Beach County for twenty twenty-five is about a hundred and thirteen thousand per household. So the target buyer for this, we expect and anticipate to be between eighty and one hundred and twenty percent A M I. So to put a price number on it, this could be between four hundred to five fifty K price range for one of these, given it's a three-bedroom, uh, three-bedroom, two-bathroom, three-bedroom, three-bathroom. So, right, if I can answer your question there, rental and flexibility for sale.
The market rate?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chair. Um, question, could you go back to the slide pertaining to the materials that are gonna be used? With the project backing up to I ninety-five, what sorts of, um, materials that you, are you gonna use to eliminate, you know, noise pollution from I ninety-five? Are there gonna be, you know, hurricane impact windows put into place? Can you speak to the materials that are gonna be used on the site?
Absolutely, so everything will be hurricane impact and designed to meet wind load, of course. So as you know, when you install hurricane impact windows, um, you know, you're really not hearing much inside. But I will say that we've designed our landscape buffer to accommodate that noise from I ninety-five, and we do have a site that directly above I ninety-five, where the second lot from I ninety-five. So it's the landscape that we focused on to attack that, that issue.
And then what's to the, what is that, the east of it?
So to the west is a nursery that has been owned by the same owner since nineteen eighty-eight. To the right, I believe that is a nursery. Kurt could respond on that, I believe it is.
It's a, it's another, uh, landscape operation there. They've been there a long time. I don't know exactly how long, but it appears they've been there, but there's some, there's two landscape operations on either side. And as you know, uh, board members, across the street to the north is the church there.
Um, that's the only questions I have for that, Chair.
Thank you, Joseph. Got it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Wiley. I got a couple of questions. Um, first of all, I wanna thank you and the applicant for coming into our town, providing us with housing and also jobs. On that note, Mr. Sermons, um, we have that little language that we insert on projects as far as six months after the, uh, certificate of occupancy is issued. We would like to know, um, how many Riviera Beach residents were employed in, in this, on this project? How many Riviera Beach, Beach vendors? We have public, we have, uh, electrical, plumbing, we have a lot of supply houses here that also employ Riviera Beach residents. Bottom line is, the purpose of this little condition that we've always added, uh, since I've been on this board, is to make sure that our community also benefits from the developers and their projects coming in. So if Mr. Sermons has that available, he could read it to you and see if you're amenable to adding that as a condition as well.
If you give me a moment, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, I'll find it for you.
Other questions?
Yes.
Okay, cool. The parking, I saw Mr. Thompson say that there was parking on the tandem. When you park on a tandem, you're blocking the sidewalk. So what do you mean about that extra car? When you got three and four bedrooms, you definitely have a household with more than one car. So what, what are you talking about, the tandem?
Right, right.
Are they gonna be blocking the sidewalk?
So we've designed the driveways to be twenty-two feet long. Standard parking space is eighteen feet, and that way, most cars, I'm not speaking for large trucks, but most cars will not back up past a standard parking space at eighteen feet. So typically, for a standard vehicle, they would not block the driveway in this.
So you'll have enough room?
Right.
But there is no street parking in case somebody has a party. You only have four guest parking for the entire development.
You, you will be able to park along one side of the street.
You will, so that would add additional parking for, uh, for guests who have different type of family functions, correct?
Yes, yes, we just can't count that to the code requirement.
Okay. The police department gave a, a lengthy, um, recommendations with that. I, I did not see it included as conditions. Did the developer get a chance to read the lengthy Riviera Beach Police Department recommendation? Because that's part of the security that we're gonna be offering our citizens, who are hopefully gonna be able to move into that, uh, those townhomes. And did they accept the Riviera Beach Police Department's list of recommendations?
We did read them, and we absolutely accept those. So for one, for example, was adding more lighting between buildings. We accept all of the conditions given by the police department.
Okay, so we can add that as a condition as well?
Well, the condition reads, uh, Mr. Fernandez has priority issuance of, uh, permit issuance, the applicant shall amend their photometric lighting plan to comply with the, uh, included letter from November twenty-fifth from the Riviera Beach Police Department.
So they, they agreed to that, they're amenable to that, correct?
List all of it.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we're perfectly clear on that. Another thing is, you mentioned that you're looking at the flexibility between rental and purchase. So if you're on the So if you're on the rental market, what are you looking at on a rental landscape to charge? What are you going to be charging for rent?
For the landscape?
No, no, rent, rent.
Oh.
You said you want to re, rental units with the flexibility of selling. So what will you be charging for rent?
So we're planning on rental units. We do want the flexibility to possibly pivot to for-sale later in the future. And by, in the future, I mean the near future, once we start building and seeing the market. But are, are you, and I apologize, are you looking for a number for rent?
Just a rough idea to see how much it's going to be, our, hopefully our citizens will be able to afford to live there. Just to, just to give us an idea of what we're looking at.
Right, right. So a three-bedroom in this area, and I, you know, briefly know the market. A three-bedroom, we're looking at between 2,800 and 3,400, depending on the site, the location. But that's ballpark, that's probably what it would be.
One last thing, in addition to what Mr. Sermons is going to read into the record. I did a little research into the Sinatra Company, as, as you probably did as well before you accepted them as a client. They have some issues with their rental properties from Buffalo to Florida. I'm sure you've read the issues, okay? Those issues run the gamut of renters unable to reach the property manager, the property manager not fulfilling the, the needs of the, of the renter, repairs on, timely repairs. So what the Sinatra plan on doing for the Riviera Beach so we avoid the issues that you've had in your properties in Buffalo and Florida?
Right, well, I appreciate that feedback, actually. I didn't know, I knew a little bit of that. But of course, it's difficult to speak directly on behalf of that for that specific question. And I'll ask staff, is there any, anything that we could do, you know, potentially monitoring? I mean, we're not opposed to making right with that, with this property. We want to be a part of the city. That's why we work so hard on this project, the architecture, the landscape especially. So we don't, do not want that to go to waste. I can speak on them for that, I know. So I, I guess to attack that right now, I just simply don't have an answer to you. But I will follow up with them and give them your feedback and have them watch this meeting, of course, which I'm sure they are right now.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Mr. Sermons, do you have that language?
Yes, I, actually, I have it here. So the language that the board previously used was, "The applicant shall actively advertise employment opportunities for temporary and permanent positions within the city of Riviera Beach, including participation at community job fairs or hosting specialized recruitment events. The developer shall provide a report to the Development Services Department at six months post certificate of occupancy. And that report shall document the outreach efforts to acquire local employees, provide the number of local employees hired, provide the number of local businesses contracted with, subject to employment and privacy laws, and the percentage of construction costs expended with local vendors."
Thank you, absolutely commit to that.
So can we add that, Mrs. Thompson, as a condition as well?
I have it notated, Mr. Fernandez. I'll be, well, I'll do it right now. I'm going to ask Mr. Evans to email me that wording so I can add it to the staff report.
And you understand the bottom line for that is you're coming into our town. So I want to make sure, the board and I want, want to make sure that our citizens and our local companies that hire our citizens are at least part of this development that's going on in our city.
Absolutely, I fully agree.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That's it for now, Mr. Wylie.
Thank you, appreciate it. Good question, good question. Ms. Burgess?
Yes, I think I heard the applicant state that you have other projects in this area in Riviera Beach?
We, I, I apologize for the confusion. I was mentioning the flexibility between rental and for-sale. And I know a project personally that we did, and this is in Jupiter, but it's a townhome project, almost exactly the same architecture, that we got that approved for rent. And the fluctuation in the market, we just needed some flexibility to do for-sale. And that's ultimately still not built right now, but it's a completely different town. Now just speaking, you know, about that similarity.
Okay, thank you. And one other question, can you kind of explain to us or talk about your company's community footprint?
I apologize, are you referring to Sinatra and Company or are you referring to Cutler and Here?
Sinatra.
Sinatra and Company, for their, their community footprint?
Yes.
Well, I will say this is their first project in Riviera. I apologize, I'm a little unsure what you're asking.
So what I mean by community footprint, so it's a company, millions of dollars. What does the company normally do, like, in a community? Like, their, their community footprint? Do they in-kind donations, like, anything that the company does to give back to a community where they have their projects?
Well, I'll have to follow up with you on that. But of course, we are committing to that condition to make sure that we are involving the residents and involving the city of Riviera Beach. But I will absolutely follow up on that right after this meeting to understand their community footprint. And I'll send you an email or staff or however you would like to do that to answer that question for you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I have for now, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Davis?
Yes. So with regard to Leo Lane, so you only have one ingress and egress through Leo Lane?
That's correct, ma'am.
And then does that all, does all the traffic dump out onto Military Trail?
If I may answer that, ma'am, the, the width of that ingress and egress is 24 feet wide, which meets code. It's a two-way ingress and egress, and it, it empties out onto Leo Lane.
And then where does Leo, it goes from Leo Lane to Military?
Leo Lane leads straight, straight to Military. Yes, ma'am, it should go west.
Leo Lane is east and west, and Military Trail is north and south. So it would empty into, from Leo Lane to Military, if that runs.
That's correct.
Okay, so you have three or four, you have, you're planning to, this is a family project eventually, you hope. So I have a little concern about the numbers of vehicles going, the traffic in and out. So how many trips is that, are you anticipating a day? And what does that do to the traffic pattern? And the, I guess, the mess of traffic in that area?
Absolutely. So, great question. As you know, with residential per unit, that's 10 trips per day, which is the lowest trips per day used that you could have. And our peak hour trips, that's really neat, how you need to measure it. That's peak hour, you know, leaving for work at eight, coming home from work at five, let's say. We have 25 peak hour trips, so very, very low for this site.
Okay, and then does that include, because I just simply don't know, I'm not challenging you at all. But does that include workmen and the people who work there? Do you include all that?
So it's, it's, I actually, I asked that question myself. I don't believe it was this project, it was something in the past. But that does include actually, like, Amazon deliveries, like, just a, a standard or average amount of, you know, landscapers coming in to do landscape or something along those lines. It does account for those trips as well, too.
Okay. And then, you don't have much yard space there for families to, you know, participate? Is that, I don't, I'm not really good at reading, this sort of thing, so is that correct?
Right, right. So they do have, they do have a backyard, but unfortunately, just based on the width of the site, the yard space is limited.
And are there any terraces on the unit?
I apologize, say again?
Terraces, terrace?
Terraces?
Cockney?
No, no, not with, not with this architecture.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
The Geller?
I have one question, this for staff, and they may not be able to answer it either. What are we doing about the fire department? You know, they have relocated or moved to one that was there, out there on Military Trail. There's a lot of new development going up in that area. And what's happening with the fire department?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
The city of Riviera Beach and the fire department at this time is not reactivating the fire depart, Fire Station 89, I believe is the number on Military Trail. And they, in the reconstruction and consolidation process, the staff at that station was moved to the one near Congress. But in that process, there was a investment in technology for the traffic signals along the corridor so that even though the closest fire station is no longer on Military Trail, that the fire department can get to residents much quicker through the automatic signalization. And I don't know all the ins and outs of the technology, but the signals do change based on those trucks going through to serve or respond to emergency calls. So that has reduced the amount of time it takes the fire department to get to this end of the city. For additional information on their response times and how they've adjusted with the station consolidation, I would have to reach out to the fire department for additional information. But that is my Development Services understanding of how they modify operations and utilize technology to continue to provide a high response time to issues that may take place on that end of the city.
If you could have the fire department come in and give us a status on that because I don't know if you've ever been in that area about between 4:00 and 6:00 o'clock. You can forget it. You know, it is, it's backed up, especially on Military Trail. I feel that there's a, I know there is going to be a lot of issues and a lot of slowdown with the fire department if there's any major issues in that area. So I would like, I would like to see or hear something from the fire department on that.
Yes, understood.
That's all I have.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chair.
My questions have been addressed, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have another question.
Yes.
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So for the fire department to go in and out, there's no turning basin, for lack of a better word, how do they, it doesn't look like there's enough space for them really to turn? If you had, if you had the police, the fire, and others there, how are they going to get out?
So we've designed the T-turnaround, and we've ran an auto-turn exhibit. Our engineer ran an auto-turn exhibit that shows a fire truck being able to do a three-point turn and back out using that T-turnaround. And that's not counting the guest spaces. So cars can be in all four of those guest spaces, in a fire truck, a garbage truck, any large vehicle can turn around very, very easily. It meets all of the radiuses for fire. And of course, the fire department did approve that after they reviewed those auto-turn exhibits.
So when you have the fire department, you usually have the paramedics, then you have the police, if they're all on one, in one suit. How they really, how does that, how are they going to turn around in the middle when you have an emergency in the middle of one of the?
Right, and, and that's a great question. So they will use a turnaround. And what I've learned, just really through experience, I would say, is that they already have a plan for these approvals. Once a project is approved, they have a plan with all of those different agencies on how we're going to circulate through the site. And okay, where is the fire access for this particular site? A lot of sites that are very, very complex, I mean, this one's not, you know, it's just one drive aisle, but a lot of sites that are very complex, you only have one fire access when there could be a large parking lot, a lot of different buildings. So to my understanding, they already have a plan going into it before they get there.
Who's they?
Fire department, police department, paramedics.
I'm not an expert at anything, but it'd be great if we could see something a little bit more specific. I'm not concerned about one. I'm concerned about you can have a lot of cars that are already parked there. You also have, you can have the fire department, maybe more than one engine, and depending on the situation, and the paramedics, and the police. And they all have to move. And it doesn't appear that there's enough space for them to independently move.
Right, absolutely. And, and what I can do is I can follow up personally with the fire department, police department, and, you know, paramedics get some type of coordination prior to approval of this project if that is the most.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I'd just like to also add, so the fire and police, they also have the ability to restrict the access at the entrance. So they could, in effect, use both sides of the street if they had to maneuver multiple vehicles in and out because they could prevent cars from, from going into and leaving the development because it's of, of a very small size. So that's just one other. And in determining this, all the plans go to both police department and the fire department. And the fire department has a very specific specifications that prove that a fire truck can comfortably turn around, which was referred to earlier. So the fire department does approve the access, and that's very, based on very specific code regulations. But I just, just wanted to add that they can control both sides of the street if they need to get multiple vehicles.
The main, the main thing here, ma'am, to bear in mind is the fire department were, and the police department, as well as police department, were a part of the review pro, process for this permit, for this application. And they, you know, gave their approval. Now, I will say, having heard everything else, I will just summarize that if this project gets approved and if they go over the building permit, there'll be another review made and completed by the police department and the fire department in particular. Since Mr. Geller's point, it's a part of the permit review process, they do another thorough review to make sure that not only that 24-foot wide right-of-way, but also, as you see, that the, that T-formation there is where they could come in, come back out, back up, and then come back out again. Let's see. There's another project there, I'm sure you realize, I'm sure Mr. Geller realizes, there's another residential property just to the, to the west of this site. Very similar in terms, in terms of its layout with the one-way, with a two-way in and out. I think they have a cul-de-sac, that, that, that unit, that project to the, to the west here. But the same, the same concept, they come in, come back, back out, and then pull back out again. The issue here that Mr. Geller brought up, of course, is that along Military Trail, it gets further busy. And so we'll make sure that during the permit process that through the fire department, that there won't be any issue there.
Well, I wasn't really concerned about one vehicle. I was concerned about the multiple vehicles and the cars all being in what appears to be relatively, even though it's too lame, relatively small area. That's all, I wasn't disputing anything about one vehicle. I was more concerned about multiple emergency vehicles in the residence. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Just to, as a reminder, we had Chief Kurd in here from the fire department previously. And as Mr. Evans stated, before a project is reviewed, they do the analysis of the turning radius. I know myself, because I've asked Chief Kurd and other representatives as to the turning radiuses of their equipment and the fact that the police arrives first, then usually paramedics if there's an emergency, and you sometimes have a rig. And I was assured that they do these studies with the turning radiuses before they give a recommendation on a project. I just want to make sure that is still the ongoing scenario as we represented. I'm going back a couple of years now on different development projects. So when we vote on something, I'm taking into consideration prior statements made by your, your division and also Mr. Kurd as to what the analysis that he puts into with his rigs before they give the approval, and the same with the police department. So I just want to make sure we follow up with them, that they still have the same policies in effect for the, when they give out their approval. for the, when they give out their approval process. And as far as Military Trail between four and six, some city fire departments, and Mr. Kerd's aware with, because we're doing it right now on Singer Island, when you have certain, develop, they usually station a rig in a certain area during a certain time if they deem it necessary because of lack of response. So that's something logistical that you can bring up to Chief Kerd as well, because I've always, I've brought it up to him, and he's assured me that logistically, they can work it out. So if there's an issue with Military Trail between four and six, or in the morning with traffic, maybe he can work out something, since there's nothing, no FD station up there at this time, that maybe he can work out something where he can leave a paramedic squad and a rig up in that area during those times, just in case for response time. Otherwise, they'll be in a parking lot with everybody else. My humble suggestions.
Thank you, Chair.
All right. Now, sir, I have a question, just to make sure, and so do people in the audience, people at home can kind of understand the rendering. The property we're looking at, technically how it's presented, it comes out to Leo Lane, correct?
Correct.
All right, so what is that directly to the south of that? Because I did a little work in that area also. And to the south of that, is that a road that leads to Military Trail also? Or is that the back part of the other apartment complex on another road?
So of course, I apologize for the confusion. So you're talking about the south of our property, directly south?
Right.
There's no, there's no road that connects anywhere else other than to Leo Lane and then Leo Lane to Military. There's no other connection.
Okay, because looking at the map, the way it was dotted off, it looked like it was another road on the other end, or whatever.
Right.
Right, so like, like they had there. Okay, so yeah, so assuming that that was another road, because I was just saying that would be another area. And that would explain why it's not a throughway.
I see, I see.
Would have broke up the traffic and made it a little easier for traffic coming in and out.
Right.
So that is closed off.
And I believe the reason really in the future would be, and it, it makes sense, is there's not, no opportunity for cross-access with this. This is a, you know, private community, and we have a nursery on both sides of us. So there's no opportunity for cross-access between properties, given the privacy of our residents.
Okay. And also, my, one of my, I guess the main concern, I guess everyone's concerned, because everyone on the board addressed it, about the parking for the guest area that's on the far end. And just assuming, like you said, it seemed to be very nice, three, four-bedroom condos, correct? Which, like I said, probably going to have more than two, maybe three cars, or four. And if that's the possibility. And I know you said you moved the apart, the condos slightly in from the border, which kind of alleviated some of the space that was for the size of the drive of the road. And I was just a little concerned is that what happens when, or what would be something that you can do when there's so many cars on one side of the road to where someone parks on the other side, and then we start having issues with, like you say, any kind of fire trucks, any kind of, you know, police department or whatever going through? Is there any kind of?
Right, and that, that's really the difficulty of making a plan. So we have four guest spaces and thirty-six units. We have a mix of three to four-bedroom units. We have a one-car garage and then a one-car driveway. So in reality, you can park two cars on your property. Any other car would be parked on one side of the road. And then the four guest spaces, you would assume if all working correctly, that would be just for guests. And really, we're bound by meeting the code. So when we're designing the plan, we're saying, all right, we need, we need seventy-two parking spaces, which all our garage counted with the driveway, that's two for each unit, and then the guest spaces. So going over that, we don't, we've ran the numbers on it. We don't anticipate much of an issue going forward, but I certainly understand your concern.
Hi, good evening. Nicole Plunkett, for the record, with Cutler and Hearing. I just also wanted to add into that there will be transparency, and we'll provide this to the applicant as well, transparency for those who are interested in even moving in here in the first place about, these are the rules and regulations. You know, when you're interested in moving into a new location, whether it be rental or purchasing, there's an understanding of what the rules and regulations are for the community, and that that should be provided clearly to potential residents who are interested in moving in, understanding that there's one garage space, one tandem space, four guest parking spaces, and the potential to maybe park on one side of the road for a special event or party. That'll all be coordinated within the internal rules and regulations of the community, but also provided ahead of time, so that way there's no surprises for the residents who are moving in and unexpectedly don't have enough parking.
On the price of a marketability, you said from four to five hundred fifty thousand, correct? For home, homeownership?
Right, and that's just the ballpark number, based on the market today in Palm Beach County, in this area.
No, I understand it's expensive and everything, and it's a pretty nice area. Do we have any more questions by the board?
I, I, Chair, thank you. I wanted to follow up with a few things. One, how will we track the usage of local vendors on this particular project? What would be the tracking mechanism?
I will direct that answer to Kurt. However, however it's been done in the past, we're certainly committed to doing so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So this, it's not a city code or a regulation, but we are, per the Planning and Zoning Board's recommendation, putting it in the entitlement. And so what we'll do is we'll, once they have applied for their building permits, then we can remind them of the requirement to track. And then, and then the developer is required to provide us within, I think it's six months.
Six months, I picked it up.
And that's, six months starts from the day that they get the approval for people to move into the, to occupy the space. So within that six-month period, they have to provide us the report that provides a summary of what was done for the project related to employment and utilizing local vendors. But it's not a code requirement. It is something that we put into the entitlement process. They're required to do it, but we don't have any specific reporting guidelines on it.
Follow-up, Chair?
Yes.
So yeah, I understand that it's not a, it's just something we have as part of operations. But if they're, do the whole entire project and then show up six months later and then not do what we asked them to do, that's sort of kind of moot point, right? Because the project would be done. So that's why I was asking about the tracking mechanism. I'm not trying to add any more work to anybody else, but I just wanted to be clear on that part of it. One more follow-up question, Chair, if I could. In regards to the reviews, and you said that you would follow up. Once we approve it, you move on next to the council, where would the follow-up to us rest?
I, well, I'm committed to following up with you immediately after this. So I would say, well, of course, I need to follow up with Kurt and some agencies so as fast as I can get responses back. But if I get responses back tomorrow, I will send that over to Kurt, and he'll forward that to you all.
Okay. And then the last one, with the community footprint. I know you said, you sort of kind of answered it, but I didn't see a clear answer on that. I know, if I'm not mistaken, you say you will follow up with that as well. So I'm just trying to get timelines, so we don't say we're going to follow up and then we don't hear anything else.
Right, right. So I am going to follow up with the owner as soon as I am done with this presentation here. I'll get a response from him tomorrow, and I will follow up and send that to Kurt, and he will coordinate that with you all. So you will have an answer on that right away.
Thank you, Chair.
Chair? Yes, Chair. Leo Lane, is, are they, is there any plans on widening that road? Because we just approved a big complex over there that's going to have two or three hundred, you know, a large complex. And they're also going to be coming out on Leo Lane also, going into Military Trail. What's going on with Leo Lane that's going to be able to handle that, that large traffic?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
At the moment, I'm not aware of any plans to widen Leo Lane based on the traffic trips that have been calculated for all of the recently approved projects. The city engineer or public works hasn't indicated the need for widening. So I believe it's safe to say that it has not been a determination that a widening project is needed on Leo Lane, based on these recent projects.
And just to follow to his question, is there a light at the end of that Military Trail? It is?
Yes, it is.
Right, that's exactly what I thought it was. All right, is there any more questions? Do we have a motion?
Chair, I'd like to motion to the, for the approval of SP twenty-five zero zero one four, as read into the record by Ms. Weathers, explained in length by Mr. Thompson, as well as the applicant, to include the conditions that were read into the record, including the lengthy letter from the police department, the hiring conditions that we also requested, and any other conditions set forth in Mr. Thompson's explanation.
Second. Chair, it has been properly moved and seconded. Are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Board member Burgess?
Yeah.
Board member Joseph?
Yes.
Board member Stringer?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fernandez?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, Chair.
Welcome to the city by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Thank you so much for your time, and I will follow up with you all immediately. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you.
Onto seven B.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County, Florida, adopting updates to the city's comprehensive plan pursuant to Chapter one sixty-three, Florida statute amending the definition of the future land use element, the housing element, the transportation element, the infrastructure element, the recreation and open space element, the conversation element, the coastal management element, the intergovernmental coordination element, and the capital improvement element, removing the public school facility element and adding to, adding it to the newly added community resource element, adding an economic development element, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan by changing the future land use destination for, for part of parcels of land more practical, described in Exhibit B, from office and commercial to new land use, general mixed use in office to single-family residential, providing for inclusion into the comprehensive plan, providing for trans, transmittal, providing for conflict, providing for servility, and providing for an effective date. The presenter will be long-range plant, long-range principal planner, Suneed Simon Roman.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Good evening, staff. Good evening, residents of the great Riviera Beach, Florida. This is December eleventh, two thousand twenty-five. I am Suneed Simon, principal planner here in Development Services. And tonight, we'll be talking about potential land use changes that we are proposing as a part of our comprehensive plan two thousand forty, that we are trying to get to that finish line. And we are excited to begin this process as we get to the finish line with our, our plans update. Goes for this evening is to understand the potential changes that are being presented this evening, to learn where this is, we are, we are proposing for this to happen. And we are hoping to get to the decision on a new land use that we are proposing for the city. I was hoping it was a different graphic, but we will work with this one. During our process, during our process of the comp plan, we started talking to residents about what is it that we need to see here in the city? And we also talked to our business, our, our local businesses, to ask what is it that we're missing in our city? How do we improve our city? And how do we make this a space that you're able to grow? And what are the things that we need at the city? And a lot of things that were brought up were addressing, and in, this is a word cloud. So in the word clouds, the bigger things that came out the most, those are the ones that you see the biggest in word-wise. And so a lot addressed our economics, commercial areas. We talked about our downtown, talk about places to go, making it a destination. Where is it that we can go to have a restaurant? Why do we have to go to West Palm Beach, or down to Delray, or up to Jupiter, right? Why can't we have these things locally? What are our kids able to do? What are some of the activities that they're able to have? Why is it hard for recreation to be within some of our areas in our city? So those are some parts of the conversations that we had. And then when we had our survey go out, we had folks talk about our local businesses need to be addressed. How are we supporting our local businesses? And then our underdeveloped commercial areas. What are we doing about these places? And then alongside of that, we looked at what were the top themes that we kept hearing from everybody? And number one theme was support our local dining, retail, and entertainment. How do we strengthen that? They talked about how, how do we look as a city, right? They talked about parks and recreation enhancements. We talked a lot about housing. Where do we live? How do we, how do we make sure that we are not pushed out of our areas? And then also, when we talk about our seniors, where do our seniors live if they want to stay within the community? But maybe my house is just too big for me, but I want to be maybe a smaller house, maybe on the property with my, rest of my family or friends, right? We talked about different things. And then local business development. How do we support our local businesses so that they too are strengthened in our area? So we started, so as a team, we started thinking about what can we do as we look at our maps today, as we look at how our city is set up? What is it that we do, what is it that we do, and I gave a sneak peek, but I'm going to go in, what is it that we do to allow all this to happen in certain places? And so what we'll be proposing today is a new land use. Our new land use is going to be a general mixed use. And why are we doing it? We're doing it because, like I said, we want places that we can actually go to and enjoy. But we need our neighborhoods to be places where we don't have to always get into our car to go across town to do that. We know we need to increase our economics here in the city, right? We need to have, we need to have places where, that they're more than what we have today, and that we're able to buy food nearby, that we're able to shop nearby, that we're able to lounge nearby. And then have a stronger community, because it doesn't necessarily mean commerce. It doesn't necessarily mean we live there, but we can also hang out there. It could also be our parks where our kids go, or where we go to take a walk and to actually move our bodies, right? These social gathering spaces, or to have more concerts on the green, more movie nights as a city, just places that are close together, where we're not doing to, we're not going across town to go and enjoy someone else's property, right? And then use our land smarter. So what we're proposing as a city, we're proposing to remove, because right now we have this office designation where we kind of were able to make this back in twenty-three. It was October of twenty-three where it was brought to the board, to this particular board. And we started talking about, in the office, can we add a residential aspect to it? In the office, sorry, I bumped, I bumped my jump. We also talked about, in the office, can we add restaurants or smaller restaurants? Are we able to add fitness centers? So what were we creating when we did that office? We were creating this mixed-type use. And so we decided, and we also realized, and you will see the map in a little bit, that we didn't have too many office spaces that was going to allow this. So if we're already creating and trying to have this place that has multi-use, and we notice that our city as a whole is missing some of this, why not stretch it in certain places that make sense? And then we started talking about mixed-use developments in our commercial areas that would allow to provide housing, more civic use, and other development options. Why? We have a lot of pressures that are happening here in our city. We have a lot of pressures that are happening here in our city. People are wanting to buy commercial properties, as you guys were just talking about Leo Lane and all. People are trying to buy our commercial properties and turn them into housing, right? So which is great, we need more homes, but at the same, we need commercial. So why not have this area that's allowing us to do just that? And then we need to improve our corridors. When you come off of ninety-five or you come off a federal highway and then you go down Blue Heron or you're going down Barack Obama, we know we can improve the space to allow us to do more there. We know that it has, it can, I would love if I can turn down and I can get in and I said, oh, I needed some broccoli for tonight's dinner, right? There's some certain things that we know that we can do that would allow us to have a higher quality life here in the city. And so we are proposing the general mixed use to help us to do that. The language that we are proposing is that the general mixed use category, it's intended for smaller mixed use commercial centers outside of the downtown mixed use. We are not trying to take away from the downtown that the city has been working diligently to build. Development in these areas should be pedestrian and transit friendly and encourage a vertically mixed use, mix of uses. But I also think horizontal is fine too. And though at lower intensities than what is permitted in our downtown use, we are not trying to be downtown. This is not my presentation. Some of the things that I want us to look at is how do we look currently? I apologize. Go say, go dance.
All right, we uh we are transferring the updated PowerPoint presentation to the room computer. In the meantime, what staff is proposing is a result of, um, as has been articulated before this. We've had many community conversations since we started this comprehensive plan journey. And one of the things that I think we all agree on are the need for additional commercial opportunities in the city. Um, and right now, some of the developments that have come in have stated that the land uses aren't fitting what they're trying to do. The project that was mentioned earlier, Celeste on the trail, that's on Military Trail, uh, the land, a part of the land under it was had the future land use of commercial, which did not allow residential. And for that reason, they requested and were approved by City Council to change the future land use to residential. The zoning district that we're proposing right now, uh, mixed use, general mixed use, would have allowed the residential and the commercial to coexist on the same property. So you can have a development where you have, um, some are all commercial or commercial on the bottom floor and then a residential above that. There are several places in the city that we identified that this use uh would be helpful. So we don't have to pick constantly between one or the other. We envision our downtown district, we envision mixed uses. But so far, um, outside of that, we're very, um, what we use in the planning world, Euclidian in terms of our zoning, one type of use here, only residential, only commercial, only industrial. Um, and this poses to mix that when it comes to a certain types of residential and commercial so we can get the most out of those properties. And we believe it's a benefit for developers as well as our community and things we're looking for. Um, so all of this is a result of the feedback from the residents and looking at our map on what we can do better with the property uh that we already have. Uh, so again, just recouching the conversation of of what Ms. Simon has stated earlier in her presentation. And if you're ready to continue, Ms. Simon, I'll move the floor back to you.
Excellent, excellent summary. Um, some of the standards that we will have with this one is that to establish a mixed use zone, um, it promotes buildings that are appropriate in scale and design, um, ensuring the compatibility with the adjacent residential areas, um, requiring amenities and services that accommodate day-to-day needs of residents, employees, and employees, encouraging walkable streets, public spaces, and active ground floor uses if they're doing this in vertically, and then allowing net residential densities up to fifteen units per acre um with an intensity of two point O F A R. Examples of this, on the left, you'll see it's a vertical mixed use. Um, this one is in Boynton Beach, Florida, where you have, um, this particular establishment has the ground floors active to be retail, restaurants, um, different services, and then above are housing. And then you have the one on the right, um, which is in Peachtree Corners in um near the suburbs of Atlanta, Georgia, um, where it's a horizontal mixed use development, um, where they're using different land uses is within one space, right? So they have shops, restaurants, housing, recreation, um, and other commercial uses there. Before you is the proposed map of these changes. And the proposed map does not only have a GMU, which is our general mixed use, but it also has a change of office going into single-family residential, because we're also doing a, we're also doing a change that we believe needs to be had during this timeframe of updating our future land use map. So I'm going to address that, how, I'm going to address the, um, one of the changes that's happening. So one of the things that we're going to be doing with, what we'd like to do with the GMU is getting rid of our office designation and changing that office to two things. One will be changing it to general mixed use in the areas that it's appropriate. We also have, where you can see my arrow, this particular area where we have office, um, within a neighborhood. And so what we're requesting from the board today is that we're able to change that office to single-family residential. So that way it matches, um, but now that way it reflects the current zoning use that's happening, which is single-family and R six, it's RS six, where it can, so then it'll just go nicely with the zoning that's already happening, a single-family, and allow that community to be a residential community without this office aspect to it that was kind of hanging over it. The map that you see on the left, it's a little hard on you guys on this big screen, but what you see on the left is a little darker purple. Those are the streets of twenty-five, the twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh, um, across on on Blue Heron, the neighborhoods that are on Blue Heron. Right now, like I just showed you their office, and so we're requesting that they turn into single-family residential. We believe that some of this was done because the homes in front of it that are actually alongside Blue Heron are part of the CRA and those are considered downtown. And so maybe the idea was that if we had them office, it would kind of flush nicely. But as a, as a team, we've decided that the use are homes, so not, why not align it with the single-family? The next change that we'd like to do is that the other areas of our city that are considered office, to turn them into general mixed use. This particular one is along East Blue Heron. It's currently office, like we said. And across the street from it is part of the CRA and that that's the downtown. But we believe because this area is closer to homes and because there it's already an office use, that it makes sense to just keep it as is and utilize it as the use that it's going there. But we want to make sure that the actual idea of flexibility is in there so that way they're able to utilize that space more.
And Ms. Simon, if I may jump in again, Mr. Chair, um, this area again is another example of where the existing zoning and future land use was not serving uh the city or development well, as there was a recent text amendment to allow restaurants in the office district, because before restaurants weren't allowed. Only, um, very strict and germane office uses were allowed there. So we've been recognizing for some time that we need additional flexibility in terms of uses in these areas. Uh, so that's another example of the, um, prior or current future land use not serving the current needs of the city that led to this recommendation for the comp plan.
And it was a restaurant and fitness centers and. The areas that we're proposing for this to happen are where you see it. We just talked about that corner on East Blue Heron. We talked about changing the ones that are in the middle that are going from office to residential. But then there's another one on Blue Heron to the far left. That would be turning into general mixed use as well. Those are the properties to the north would be, they're our last standing office properties that would be going into general mixed use. We'll talk about the property south of it, um, in just a little bit. Sorry, I went a little bit backwards. All right. Our other change that we'd like to do, we talked about, we had a couple of areas that had that office aspect to it. But then we, when then we talk about general mixed use allows us a little bit of flexibility. We learned that we had, um, people that are coming every day to kind of change our commercial into residential. Um, so we said, well, why not extend that to other areas that may potentially benefit from turning into, um, a mixed use as well? There we go. So the areas that we'll be talking about, um, we'll be talking about going across Obama. We have that area that is south on Blue Heron, and I'll get a little closer in a minute. We have some of the areas around ninety-five, if anyone is familiar, where the McDonald's is. There's a Denny's and other commercial properties there, like that's a hotel, the Super Eight is there. And then one on Military Trail, very in the same vicinity of the same, the, um, the Leo Lane that we just discussed today. So the property that is the south, the property on the south end, right now it's a neighborhood commercial zoning with the commercial, with the commercial flew on top of it. This would allow this area to be able to do more. It'll be nice, it would complement the new police station that would be across the street from it and the neighborhood schools in that beautiful neighborhood. Um, so this would just be a nice active area, um, if, if, um, we're able to develop it well in that region. Alongside Barack Obama, on the north end, we're looking at having this be a very much of a flow. As the city to the north of us starts to consider areas that they would like to intensify and make more of a downtown feel, if we start to prepare ourselves as a city to make this more of a multi-use area, this would make it, this would be a very active space for us as we look at ways of, um, improving Barack Obama Highway. We also are proposing this to happen on the south end, because just north on near MLK, that's part of the CRA, it's considered a downtown. And so we're proposing to have the rest of that commercial area to just turn into a mixed use so it flows nicely with the downtown. We talked about, like I said, it was near the I ninety-five, whether we go left or we go right off of ninety-five, we're able to turn this into a robust area where we're able to, um, enjoy different amenities as well as turn into our homes possibly. And then along Military Trail, allowing them to do a little bit more with those properties so that way they actually are robust commercial across Military Trail. So that military is more active and not just a residential space, um, because we don't want to be bedroom communities to the cities north and south of us. We also want to be a destination, um, for everyone in our region. Thus, city staff recommends that, um, Planning and Zoning Board, you all, um, acting as a city's local planning agency. We recommend, we're asking that you recommend approval of the amended future land use map. Um, the remaining elements that we talked about in the title of this will be brought back to you in the future. But tonight we are asking about this particular future land use change. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may, uh, clarify, um, because of the changes that were sent to you earlier, um, you don't have to make a formal recommendation, uh, in search, in the form of a vote today to City Council, as you will see the full comprehensive plan to you, uh, soon after we've taken in all this feedback. But this, uh, hearing is an opportunity for you to give your feedback on this and as well as the residents who we've noticed each individual property owner who would be subject to this future land use change so that we can hear back from them before finalizing this plan that then we will be requesting your formal vote on. But tonight is for a feedback of as we finalize this plan.
All right, we would like, first of all, to go to, do we have any cards, any comment cards for this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, we do have a comment card. Ms. Mitchell?
Double Mitchell, um, sixteen ninety-one Essex Lane. Um, I'm calling, I have a few questions. I just found out about this, um, I'm a lifelong resident of Riviera Beach. Few questions, um, first of all, where is the downtown? Well, okay, because that was like, I had never, okay. Um, I'm talking, I'm interested in the home on West Twenty-Fifth and Twenty-Seventh. Okay? Those are the homes. I have a few questions, okay? One, if the townhouses that you were talking about for Leo Lane, the guy said they're going to go between four hundred and five hundred thousand. I, I guess that's what he said. Am I correct? Okay? How are their owners? I might be jumping. How are the owners on Twenty-Fifth and Twenty-Seventh going to be compensated? I'm, 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 maybe I'm, maybe I'm jumping. I'm under the impression, what, what's going to happen with Twenty-Fifth Street and Twenty-Seventh Street? The homes in the red. What's going to happen with those homes?
That's another project, man.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could just clarify, if you want to go ahead and make all of your comments and we will attempt to respond.
My understanding, isn't it something about imminent domain going on? I've read something somewhere, I don't know, that's why I'm also asking. If you, if those homes on Twenty-Fifth that are in the red and Twenty-Seventh, if those homeowners are going to be displaced, I don't know, but if there, if it's a possibility that they are going to be displaced, how are they going to be compensated? These people have lived in Riviera Beach all their lives. We don't want to leave, just like you said, we don't want to leave. But where in Palm Beach County, if you go fair market value, I think that's the word, if the house is worth four hundred thousand, okay? Where are they going to go get another house in Riviera Beach for four hundred thousand? That's my first question. Um, my aunt and uncle live on Twenty-Fifth. They are seventy-eight and eighty years old. They own their home outright. Where are they going to go? Where are they going to go in Riviera Beach? And I'm sure there's some more people in here with the same question. If that's the plan, because why are they in red? And explain to me the imminent domain, because I, I have, I found it somewhere, I just couldn't get it out. So if you can explain, start there with me, and maybe that'll help me out. And I want my city to grow? I've lived here all my life, but we got to do it right. Okay? So who am I going to look at? Okay.
Thank you for the questions. Um, and I do, as I spoke to members of the audience, I felt that was, um, the concern. And so what I spoke about earlier, and I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. So we're changing parts of our map, our future land use map. And one, one of the things that we found, I'm going to go first.
Laser pointer on that table as well.
Oh, it's magic.
So. I just, I just. Sixty-five. So I kind of know how the three sides, the integration, degradation and all of that. I kind of have that back.
Okay. So at some point throughout the history, these properties on the twenty-four, on Twenty-Fifth and Twenty-Seventh, they were re, they were changed to office uses. So as we looked at the map, we said, why are these residential properties office uses? So what we're proposing is to change them back to single-family. So what we're proposing is to change them back to single-family residential. There is no taking being had. The city is not trying to take the homes, push people out of the homes. We're just re-clarifying that this is a neighborhood and so that they need to have a future land use of residential, single-family. And so that is all we're doing with those properties that are on 27th and 25th. Yes, ma'am.
Chair.
Yes.
Could I also say, Sunny, if we're, you're saying changing it from office to single-family, that would actually make it harder for businesses to come in that area to put in businesses. It would only be allowed for a single-family use.
Correct.
Chair, do we have any more comment cards?
I think there's only one correct.
No, sir, Mr. Chair, that's the only comment card we have for this item.
Do we have any other questions about the board?
I know she, her second question was about imminent domain. Could you speak to that briefly? Just a general statement.
You have a word at times, right?
Oh.
So some of the fears, and I, and I heard it a couple of times where imminent domain was utilized. And that's kind of a way that sometimes a city would come in and say, we're going to pay you X amount for your property because we need to use it for other uses. That is not any part of our plan as our city for these particular properties. For our comp plan right now, we have not identified anywhere that we will be taking of a property. I don't even think we have the funds for that. So no, that is not part of our plan to be utilizing imminent domain for your properties.
Chair, if I'm.
Ms. Davis.
When designations are being changed from commercial to residential, does that change the value of the property?
So we, to before we did this aspect, to even present it or to even offer this idea, we talked to our properties appraisers office and to understand how, what happens to properties when, when this happens. And it's not the moment that you change the use, all of a sudden the value of the property increases or decreases or whatnot. It's how sales happen afterwards and how that impacts. So it really has to do with what's happening around it and not because of change has been made. And we do have that printout from the properties appraiser that we can share with everyone with that response. So no, our changing of going from office to single-family will not change its value based off of what we're doing.
Okay. A couple of other things. Were there, I don't remember which slide it was, but are any of the single-family homes, do they, when it comes to driveways, do they have to back out onto the main street?
The reason why we're changing this to a single-family is because they face inside of a neighborhood. They are not on Blue Heron. They are not on Blue Heron, they're inside of a neighborhood. So they're backing onto 27th Street, onto 25th Street. They're inside of a neighborhood. So we want to keep that neighborhood a neighborhood as opposed to having it somewhere, something else that can turn into some type of business or whatnot.
Okay. Thanks. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
So going back to the 25th and 27th, for the businesses that are already there, because you will be, we'll be changing the code, will they be allowed to expand or whatever their current operation is? They're pretty much locked into that.
If there are any businesses that are already in there, those, they, they, what is it called again?
Grandfathering.
Yeah, grandfathering. Yeah, they're not, they're legally non-conforming at that point. So it wouldn't, for them, it wouldn't matter for them. It'd be future uses that are coming and have to be residential.
Right, so if they wanted to do anything, you know, to expand their building or anything like that, it would not be blocked because now it has gone from office to a single-family resident? Thank you.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Ms. Simon, good evening and thank you so much for all the work you've done on behalf of the city and the comp plan and our residents. I got a couple of questions. I'm just worried that we use a mixed land use designation in an area where it's surrounded by single-family homes. Okay? So we got to be very careful where we use that designation because you, you got kids. 25th, 27th Street. Imagine if you would have designated that area instead of single residential units into a mixed use. So we just got to be careful what, how we plan and where we plan. That's all I'm asking, what, how we plan it.
And that's, that's a very important, that's a very important aspect that you bring up. The reason why we chose the areas that we chose was with that in mind. So there were areas that we only, we're only changing, things are already office. They were already doing the same thing that this general mixed use is trying to do. So that part didn't matter. And then there were other areas that were just commercial in nature. Some of them were commercial in nature and then you had, if I get closer to that. There's one that's near, it's on Blue Heron, so it's near other homes, but it's already commercial. And it's already doing, it's already supposed to be doing most of that anyways. Now we're allowing it to do both commercial and residential. So we're allowing it to be able to have that residential feel and some of the amenities that a residential area would have at the same time. So it's allowing it to do a little bit more than what it could when it was just straight commercial.
What's the height and the density on mixed use development properties now? Do we, do you know offhand?
For mixed use properties?
Yeah, what is, is there a height? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, so the mixed use that we have in the downtown areas is between four and eight stories.
Okay, good. Because you definitely don't want a 15 or 20-story building on, anywhere near where you don't have such monstrosities. And also, I love what you, our goals and objectives. And you know, I've been number one since you started this, smarter land use. That is key when you're doing anything and working and coming back to us, smarter land use. And I'm glad they mentioned between four and eight stories because you don't want monstrosities.
Correct.
Take, we did this last time, on Broadway, for instance. You do those monstrosities on Broadway and you got single-family residents a block away.
Right, right.
Imagine the impact of that monstrosity on traffic on those side streets. So just think smart and let's, let's start working in, on, on that. I know we're not voting on anything tonight, but I'm just, you know, we're just giving you some, some suggestions.
Absolutely.
Down the road. I know everybody loves restaurants. I know we've approved a few. I still haven't seen them, six years later and I'm still waiting. So, I mean, it's, it's a great wish list. I'm hoping that when they come, developers come to unify your, your section there, they gear them in the right directions. And we have done it for the go-karts and everything in the industrial. We have amended certain codes to allow for go-karts and other items in an industrial zone. So we've been amenable to that and hopefully we'll be able to succeed.
This also sets us up just for you, because yeah, we have been approving things that have been allowed, that, that are trying to open doors and have more restaurants and all. One of the things that was part of our new plan that we're, and I'm going to tote the new plan, is that we have an economics section. Our economics section is, that is supposed to help us so that way we now have a tool to go out to our community to say, these are the ways that we are preparing to have, I don't want to say shovel ready, but we have these spaces ready that we can advertise and market our city. So it's, it's allowing us to get one more tool in our tool belt in order to do that and to say, this is the areas that we have prepared so that way you're able to do what you're wanting to do. You don't have to go through that long process that we did with the R1 Speedway in order to come in because now we have this space that's already set for you, right? So we are beefing up our tools to be able to do that so that way it's, they're not thinking it's going to take them a long, drawn-out process to come into our city to do just that.
Thank you, and don't forget open space.
Absolutely, that's why I showed the one with the recreation.
I know, I know what we're talking about. So, and on that scenario, since we are the CRA, that property on Broadway, at first I'm going to, I'm going to have a motion to declare it as, keep it as is. We have a little more, you know, murals there, you know which one I'm talking about? So, you know, we are.
He's pushing, he's pushing.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
Chair.
Yes.
Sunny, I just have a question. What is the basis of the recommendation of removing the public school facilities element and changing that, adding it to the community resource element?
So since the plan was done, so the last plan was done in 2010. And back then we had a public school concurrency requirement that we had to do. And then since then, the legislation has changed it where we no longer have that required concurrency. So most of that language is null and void now. So it doesn't, it doesn't need its own element any longer. And so now we have tucked it into our new element that we're adding in, which is showing the different services that we as a city have. And so it's showing, one, this is how we as a city will continue to review when we have school plans come in to ensure that, that we're still reviewing, that we have capacity. We're still reviewing that we have the right field that we can also co-location, do different things with the school board. But we are not required, but the school board is not required and, and we are not required to review how we used to. It's a different type of review process that happens now. That doesn't have to work, it's not so much just on the facility, but on the school itself in general. And it's a, it's a relationship that we've been building and forming with the department, with the district as a whole. Yeah, legislation killed it. Trying to remember the year, 2017? I, I can't remember the year, but it has changed. But then our city has just adopted into the interlocal within this past year in order to recognize that change that has happened.
I'll have to go back and research that some more.
And I can send you a lot of, like, because our, because we just passed interlocal a few months ago. So I can send you all that back up so that way it's easier reading.
Just a little worried because, you know, down in Broward, they just announced today that they're closing down a lot of schools, so.
The schools?
Yes.
And why is that?
Attendance.
Attendance. And I just want to make sure that's something that's not, you know, would happen here. So if you could send that.
I can send that, but I also want to remind you that the district is its own entity. And so those decisions are out of our hand. But yeah, I will send it to you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions about the board?
Mr. Chair. Yes. Again, staff did send out mailers to each individual property that is subject to these proposed changes. And so to everyone in the audience, I know there was only one person that filled out a comment card. This comprehensive plan and these changes are a city-initiated. So this plan is intended to represent the desires of our community. So if you have any remaining unresolved questions or feedback that you want to give towards our comprehensive plan as we move towards potentially adopting it, we want you to just remain in contact with our department. We were intentional about making sure you were notified about things that will affect your property directly. And we want to continue to stay engaged with you if you have future questions or concerns about what's happening with land use in the comprehensive plan that covers really all operations of the city. But that we are here to serve you and the community. So please get our contact information if need be before you leave here and don't hesitate to reach out to us.
And I also wanted to add in your letter, I have gotten phone calls, so thank you for those that have called us. You have our phone number, you have our email address. I do ask that you go on the website, if you're able to go on the website. And I do ask you to come into our office. I know I have, I'm going to do a printout for, for one individual, but if you, please come into our office. I would love to chat more and learn more from your ideas and what your thoughts are.
Sunny, one, one last thing. Can you go back to a slide that shows an area that is currently residential that is being proposed for mixed use?
We don't have an area that's currently residential for mixed use.
Okay. Well, can you go back to just one of the ones that we're proposing to change to mixed use? Okay, so that's going from office to general mixed use.
And then we have.
I just want, you know, for some of the people who are here, so they kind of understand what mixed use means.
You're doing it for the meaning of mixed use, right?
Yes.
Instead of the ones that are being proposed.
We don't have any that are going from residential to, to mixed use. But just so they get a general idea of what that means, like what sort of things or businesses or facilities are considered mixed use.
So the goal of our commercial or office to mixed use is that we're going, instead of you just having sandwich shop, I'm trying to think what would be there.
A laundromat.
Hardware store, Ace Hardware or whatnot, just there. We're also allowing you to have other uses around it. So that way the idea is that, this is, this is the idea. The idea is that we're going from, I can go from the shop and I'm going to turn around and I'm going to be able to sit down and sit on the green. So now I don't have to have the Subway shop right here and then I have to walk a couple of blocks to get to the park. Now the park would be right next to me, right? Oh, now I've been sitting here, let me go and, I don't know, get my hair cut. It's all in this area. Let's, we're pretending that this area has all these amenities. The area on the right is one of my favorite places to visit. Like I told you, it's in Georgia. We love going there because we can pick up our, we can pick up our sandwiches. We take the kids to play. We can visit a friend, we have a couple of friends that live in the homes that's literally around the park, right? And then afterwards, we pick up dinner, we turn in something important that my sister always seems to have to turn in, in that same area, and then we go about our business. It's all in one area as opposed to cutting across town to go from this spot to this spot to my house all the way over here. That's the idea. We're mixing it, we're allowing it to do more on one property as opposed to having to do it, the industrial's over here and the commercial's over here and the house is over here. We're trying to make it in one area, make it more flexible of a use for everyone.
Sunny, can you go back to the diagram? Was that the Ocean Mall on Singer Island you, that arrow was pointing to? Was there a, right, go back, not the other one, right before.
Right before?
There was an, right there. Is that?
No.
Okay, I thought that was, looked like the Ocean Mall.
It's that, you know, when you're doing the curve, going into Singer Island?
Okay.
That whole area is considered office.
Where the gas station is?
Gas station's across, isn't it?
On the north side of the white office building.
The white office building on the north side of North.
The restaurant was supposed to go in four or five years ago?
Exactly, exactly. We're still waiting on that restaurant.
So that, that right now is, what is it designated as now?
Office right now.
So you want to do it?
General mixed use.
General mixed use.
It's, it's pretty much what inspired general mixed use. Because we were doing a lot of changes to allow that to do what it does. And then we're like, well, why are we just going to leave it to just that little corner? And also that other little blip that's on Blue Heron? Why not put it in other areas that are commercial that are kind of needing a little boost as well?
Yeah, because I thought we had, they had come before us as developers and we gave them exemptions to do what we're doing now anyway, and they never did anything with it.
Right.
So, okay, just thought I'd add.
Yeah, they were the inspiration. Yeah.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Too much fun.
Time's flying, brother. Thank you, Chair.
If I could just do one thing?
Great job, great job. Are there any other questions about the board?
Yes. We totally didn't see where the voice was coming from. Everyone went, where?
Mine's very simple. I did receive a couple of calls today and some of the residents went to Riviera 2040 and were unable to print out the, this presentation.
Yeah, and I was told the same thing by one of the audience members, correct. So we'll go back and try to figure out what happened.
It's just a blank page, a lot of blank pages.
We'll figure out what happened and then we'll repost it tomorrow, yeah.
And you couldn't download it, it was impossible to download anything, even if you didn't want to print it out.
I don't know what hap, I don't know. Yeah, so we'll, we'll go back, from, wait, on the 2040 page or onto the, the?
To the 2040. I went to 2040, I couldn't do it, I just got a blank, a lot of blanks.
So when you went on 2040, did you actually see?
Yes, I could see it, but when I was ready to print it out, it was just a lot of blank pages. Yes, I could see it, but when I was ready to print it out, it was just a lot of blank pages.
Okay, I'll find out what happened. I don't know what happened. Yeah, that's, it's through our consultant, Kevin Giordano, so we'll reach out to them. And they're on the line, actually, I think Graham is somewhere in the building. But I think he hears you, and we'll fix that tonight and have that done.
All right, and then, one question for Mr. Evans. Did you, you sent out a letter that there was something removed from the meeting tonight? With the 7B, or what was removed?
It was actual comp plan, reviewing the comp plan as a board.
Okay, um, before you leave, sir, I'd like to thank the residents for coming out. And everything, and is there, I know we asked for feedback on some of the information I was here, and I noticed some people were listening, but at this point here, would it be okay if someone had some ideas or whatever? Because that's what we're here for, to get some ideas.
This is this time, this is the time for it.
Right.
This is the time for it.
So, does anyone have any questions or any suggestions or anything, if you'd like to come up to the mic and speak?
Oh, wait, that's not what I meant.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Sorry, didn't get a chance to fill out the card there. I was kind of confused coming, okay? I can understand a lot of people who stay on 25th and 27th when they got this, got kind of excited. But the young lady, she came and she explained it, and it was very clear. But I would advise if you can get more information out, tell them what happened in this meeting, and then, explain the mixed single family to let them know. Because just like the young lady who talked about eminent domain, when they got this, that's what everybody thought about. Absolutely. Matter of fact, I was at work, and my wife called me about 7:30 in the morning. They're taking our house. Okay, so, maybe send this out, explain what it's all about. Because if that single family is not designated, then later on in the future, somebody come in, and then, they can put a business in the middle of your neighborhood. All right? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other? Well, I appreciate it, thanks for coming up, and thank you for clarifying that information. Do we have any questions? Any follow-up?
Thank you for the information, and yes, we were limited on space. So, I, I apologize that it caused any type of hysterics. I'll make the words bigger, so that way, it's seen. So, thank you for the information.
Chair.
Yes.
Sunny, are there any additional community meetings that are going to be held? Are you guys pretty much done with meetings as of today?
Three years later, we're tired.
I know, I know. I was just wondering.
No, this was, this was part of the opportunities. Rest of engagement can be done one-on-one.
Okay.
Given us a call.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay. So, are we on to workshop items now?
We have. Uh, Mr. Chair.
No workshop items. Uh, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, we have a public comment card from Ms. Margaret Shepherd.
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd to the Chair and Vice Chair. Now, you know I was coming home, you already knew that.
Yes, absolutely.
You knew I wasn't going to miss this. But happy birthday to your mother.
Thank you.
My mentor, my best friend. Very quiet lady, but I'll tell you, rattle her cage, she got you. Very nice lady, very nice. And the string I did not know you were on planning and zoning. Congratulations, young lady, and of course, Marie. Congratulations. We talked today, you didn't say nothing, man. This is my second meeting. We talked today, you should have talked. But anyway, congratulations. I was here today because I hear Mr. Fernandez always talk about hiring within. And I try not to say nothing, but I went over to Villa La Fonte, or whatever it is, in front of the Boys and Girls Club. I think Ezra Seto has that, has that property. Now, you said hire within, and I, I don't have nothing to do, so I'm checking the, some of the projects. I saw nothing but other people, we were not there. Now, we, we, and I, and then, someone today start talking about it. And they literally went off, they said, none of us was over there, and it's true. If you are going to make these rules, and I think you made the rule, and I didn't say nothing to rules with the gentleman, you are not having them enforced. If you're going to look out for Riviera Beach residents, I think it should be a code that somebody go out there and check. From the day they brought the cement till the day, about four or five days when the buildings went up, I was mortified, I mean, I was right in the streets, it's like, I can't believe this. They were doing the roof, and I guess I, I sat there so long, the guy looked at me and knocked, I said, I'm just here looking. And this is not acceptable in the city of Riviera Beach. All the projects is going up, and I, I declare, I hope, and I pray, that as you sit there and make out the roof, doing a great job, you make out the rules and regulations, it should be enforced. I mean, go by there now, they're building right now, just take time. I know they shut down very early, and I know you work. I don't know about if they're working Saturday or Sunday. But I would tell you one thing, not one of us was out there. Thank you very much.
Mr. Evans? Is there anybody from our section checking up on these work projects? Remember, when they stood up here, they agreed to the conditions of the site development. When they went to city council, they agreed to the conditions set forth on the site for their approval to build. Does unified development have any, can they go out to the sites just to mosey around, talk to the developer, the general contractor, and see what's going on? Is that, is that a possibility?
Uh, Mr. Chair? Yes. Our building inspectors are in the area on a regular basis. If they have building permits on a project of that complexity, then there's building permit inspectors who have various inspections at all the different progress points. So, there's staff there likely at least several times a week, if not every day.
But why can't they ask? Are you, 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 you got the site approval based on, you know, the hiring or the possibility of hiring Riviera Beach residents and local contractor, local vendors? Are you doing that? Simple question, can they do that? Can they ask?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
We, there is a admittedly gap in the enforcement of such a condition. We don't have a ordinance of the city that requires it. If there are situations such as our bonus exchange program, MEHOP, where in exchange for additional density and height for your building, you have to hire local and minorities and contribute to affordable housing. That's an ordinance that obligates them to do that, and we set up a contract with them that establishes the penalties if they don't do it. The majority of our developments are by right. So, the project that was here this, this evening, the zoning already says they can do what's proposed there. And unless we have something in the laws of the city that require them to hire locally, it's a voluntary obligation that they engage in. And if they don't follow through with a good faith effort on that, we are very limited in what we could do to them. In the cases of MEHOP, when we have a contract, they're in breach of contract if they don't meet their minority employment thresholds. And each contract is different, but sometimes, there's a financial penalty. There's other legal mechanisms the city can utilize because they breached their contract. But in these situations, these are by-right developments, and we don't have the, the legal tools to force them to do it. It is voluntary.
Okay, so, they're agreeing, like they do every time they stand up here, to the conditions we set forth. They want to go to city council, and that's saying they agreed to the same agreement. You're telling me we have no bite with legal for them to backtrack on the agreements they made in order to get that site application and that job approved?
To some extent, they are in violation of their site plan resolution that has that condition.
It's a contract.
Yes. How we can enforce that voluntary item, I, I think is a challenge, but.
It's a contract.
I don't know if our legal counsel has any thoughts on that, but.
Contract. And I'm, I'm glad we have them legal here. Is it a contract?
Couple of different options. One is code enforcement, obviously, they're violating an agreement that they made and not following our code. We could always look at a potential breach of contract, we have to.
Correct.
Case, but there, there are remedies. You don't just close your eyes and say, oops, you got away with it, no.
I, I, I know there, I know that, I know we have legal remedies, but what I'm hearing is we don't. Yes, we do. So, my humble suggestion would be, get together with legal, because these are binding. These are, this is a contract. So, I would suggest your, your section, get together with legal, because this is a contract with the developer, and maybe have code enforcement when they go out there, start asking questions. Yes, it is a contract. So, if you need any further legal clarification, our attorney would be more offline, not, you know, but we do have a contract with them. Every one of those developers that agreed to those conditions, there is a binding contract. Whether they like it or not, it is a binding contract. They agreed here, they agreed city council, and based on the agreements, we have a contractual obligation to follow through on the agreements. So, yes, we do.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just might make a comment. Although I appreciate the board's focus, I don't think we have any proof at this point or something, some report or some analysis that would suggest the contractors behaving in any inappropriate way.
We're not saying they aren't. What I'm saying is, I've been on this board a little over six years, and we've had this since I've been on this board, and I haven't seen any reports yet from any developer. So, how's that? Would that be okay? So, I know you're working on it, so why don't we start maybe by January and February, get these reports in? Six years and counting, I've been on this board. And I know I suggested that maybe a month after I was on this board, so it's been on here for a couple of years. I'm sure some of those developers already received the certificate of occupancy, some, not all. So, can we work on that? As far as that, we also have code enforcement that can go out there and verify this with the project, the contractors, the general contractors that are out there now. They can ask what's, it doesn't do any harm. And if they're not doing it, then we go back to legal. They get paid the big bucks. I'm sure they love billing, and then, we just go back to the contract to bill them. But anyway, that's my own humble two cents worth. Hopefully, we'll get a report next year on where all these reports have been for the last couple of years, and we move on with our lives. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the, we did provide a status update on all the projects that had that condition maybe two months ago. And the, there were, the majority of them have not reached the point of being six months post certificate of occupancy. I think there were two that have, and one that was very close to, to having the CO force to fill up, to follow up with them. But we did provide that report out to that, to this board about two months ago. And as a result of that, we did reach out to a couple of those developments that were close to get that status update. And we will just program in a near-future agenda to give another update on that. But we did recently provide that report.
I think Berkeley Landing was missing as well. And I, Berkeley Landing was also missing, you were going to address that. So, there were a couple of missing from that small list. There were a couple missing, so Mr. Evans was working on it, if I remember correctly.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, we, we did miss that one.
Yes.
If I may, Mr. Chair, yes, Mr. Fernandez, we did miss that one.
Yes, sir, and just, just look into in case something else fell through the cracks. I know you guys are super, super busy, but we do promise our citizens that, that's what we're here for, to make sure we do what we got to do. Appreciate it, thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely.
Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman, is there any way that we can get this process done before we give them final approval?
Which process is that, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Which process are you referring to?
Them giving us a report of who they have working for them. The contractors, is there any way that we can get them to give us a report before they get final?
Typically, not, you know, being a developer myself, but in most cases, they have not hired persons for the project yet, because it's not a real project until council approves it. And so, once they have that approval, then they generally mobilize to the next phase, which is getting their financing in order, and then, starting construction, a contract, or hiring contractors and things like that. In most cases, they would not have those partnerships in, in ink when they come to this body. But, but based on the questions this evening, you know, we can talk it over with our, our staff and legal to see how we can better monitor and provide reporting on it. But at the moment, generally, we wouldn't expect them to have that kind of information or contracts.
What, what is the final stage before they do to, uh, let people start moving in? What is that final stage to where we can get a report from them before we give them the okay to say, okay, you can start letting people move in?
Before people can move in, it's usually that certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so, can we get a report from them before that?
Before they request the certificate of occupancy, can they provide the report?
Or before we give it to them?
This is something we'll have to look into, we'll, we'll have to check on it. The, the CO is based on the Florida Building Code, which is state law, and I'm not sure that it would be legal for us to withhold that certificate if they've met all the obligations of the building code based on something not related to the building code. But again, bringing the building official into the conversation is something that we can do to explore what options we have.
Thank you.
Chair.
Yes.
I just, as a newbie, I think asking for a report six months after occupancy is just not realistic.
Right.
It's just to me, and I, and I know this was already done. So, I have a few things. One, because it's not law, it, I don't want to make it seem like we're forcing someone's hand to do something. Maybe there could be a volunteer agreement or something like that, because it's not a law. We technically can't not enforce anything upon someone because they verbally said, yep, that sounds like a good idea, we're going to do it. And the flip side of that, they may have tried to do it, but may not have a viable candidate to do contractual work. I mean, the workforce has changed drastically. And if you look at people's resumes, or their reviews, or their references, and it don't meet the requirement that the developer needs, we don't want to twist their hand and say they got to do it. But I think that all of this requires a little overhaul. But to say, ask somebody something after they've done it, I mean, what are you going to do? It's done.
And if, if I may, Mr. Chair, when this originally came up, it wasn't necessarily in the context, and, and this is my understanding from the staff side of the table, it wasn't in the context of construction jobs. It was businesses that were coming into the city that would be considerable employers. And so, after the business opens, make, making sure you recruit Riviera residents to be the employees at this business. Initially, it wasn't assigned to residential developments such as this, targeting construction jobs. So, at that point, six months post-CO made sense as a time point to make sure that once this business opens, that you are giving Riviera residents a first opportunity or actively recruiting them for the, the permanent jobs associated with the businesses. It looks like we're moving more towards forcing it on construction as well, which requires a kind of rethinking, a reworking of what we're doing here. So, if, if that's the desire of the board, we can look into that and rethink it. But initially, it was targeting permanent jobs that were being brought into the city.
Mr. Sermons, Chair, I brought that proposal up. And the way I spelled it out, and I should have a record of it, and you would have a record of it, was to make sure that when these contractors and developers came in to our city, that they employed our local individuals for those contracting jobs in addition to that they contract our local vendors, our plumbing suppliers, our electrical suppliers and any other suppliers we have within the city. Because they also, uh, hire local. So it was kind of a benefit to the city and our citizens that when a developer comes in, they would, they would try their best. Yes, you're absolutely correct, and we did mention that at the beginning, that if a developer has an, uh, advertises through the city with the job fair program, we mentioned the job fairs as well. If they advertise for 30 electricians and Riviera Beach only had one, we can't expect them to fill 30 spots. So we knew that. But at least the, the, the attempt was, let's just make sure that they try their best through job fairs, advertisement, city involvement, to hire local. If there's no local, then we can't fault them. But if we don't ask them, have you tried? Or let me see a list of everybody that applied for the job. We don't need the names, generics or anything else involving it. Riviera Beach resident, yes or no? So that way we get to see, get an idea of, are they, are they at least sharing the wealth with our city? That was the whole intent that we pushed this through. Uh, and I haven't had a developer yet come before, oh, said, no, I don't agree to that. But we were very amenable, that we know, like, like board member said, changing, uh, fluctuations in the employment market. But at least we stay on top of them to remind them, you promised this, you agreed to this. Have you done it? Have you done the job fairs? Have you contacted anybody that is in the city? You have a major development. I haven't seen one job fair. So that's, that's all I'm asking for. And that's all this board originally did back in the day when we passed this. So that way we know that they're working with the city on job fairs. And we did extend it to major. We're not doing it for single residences or the, the gentleman on Blue Heron who came before us that wanted to build the four, two-family units there that still hasn't done anything with the property yet. But, you know, we're, we're not talking about that. We're talking about developments. 32 units, 40 units, 50 units, 150 units, major projects. But anyway, I'll leave it at that. I'm not gonna go into too much, but that was the whole intent of pushing this way back when. But thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, so that was the correspondence, um, part C. Well, first of all, does anyone else has any, any other correspondent?
I just have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many, um, projects are proposed for the, for the military trail, in general speaking, um, in the Leo Lane area? There are none or several or?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess we're not, is, is this question related to the comprehensive plan conversation?
No. I just wanted to know.
Oh, okay. I, yeah.
Two.
I think maybe there's, uh, two active projects right now.
And how, how big, I mean, how many trips does it, does it, uh, how many cars?
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have that info, uh, handy.
Okay, I'll, I'll give you most.
Okay.
All right, so let's go and wrap it up. The C, planning a zoning board, um, up and coming planning zoning board meeting, January 15, 2026. That verified?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that's it. So do we have a motion for adjournment?
Chair, our motion that we adjourn the meeting.
8:44 PM. Merry Christmas, school all.
Happy holidays.